I don't know that I need all of this stuff. Welcome everybody to our Tuesday night, normally Monday night, our Tuesday night, September 2nd meeting of the Craven County Commissioners. That's a regular meeting and first thing we'll do is have our call to order. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Mark? Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Here.
Chairman Booker?
Here. We're going to have the prayer by our county attorney followed by the prejudiced allegiance. So if you would all stand.
Good and gracious God, in a world ripe with disharmony, we pray that you would come and fill us with your peace. Help us to trust in you. May we live in love and unity with all of our brothers and sisters. It is only in you that we come to see the true beauty and dignity of all humanity, especially those who are most forgotten and often discarded by our society. We pray this in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome all here tonight and would request if you have your cell phone with you, make sure it's on silent so as not to interrupt the proceedings. Commissioners, you've got the agenda in front of you. Are there any changes that you want to make to the agenda?
Move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll please?
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing for CARTs. So we're requested board to go into a public hearing as advertised and do I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ms. Kelly, Kelly Walker Cuthrill, would you please come and address us?
Okay, thank you. We do this every year. This is the annual 5311 Community Transportation Program and the accompanying Combined Capital Grant and this year it's for fiscal year 2027. We have advertised the information in regards to this public hearing and it is asking for the allocation of $468,329 for the 5311 grant and $487,710 for the capital.
Okay, we have nobody signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this public hearing? Hearing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Kelly. Item number two, Economic Development, public hearing, Project Home 2.0, Jeff Wood, Economic Development Director.
Good evening. This public hearing is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1. Project Home 2.0 is a local manufacturer, BSH, who plans to invest $11.3 million in real estate machinery and equipment in its existing facility and create over 199 jobs in five years. To assist this investment, the North Carolina Department of Commerce has provided a grant of $500,000 under the Rural Infrastructure Authority and the Rural Economic Development Division. This grant will be awarded and managed by the Craven County Economic Development Department and requires a match from the county of 50% or $250,000.
Okay, and again, no one has signed up to speak at that public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on that subject?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, if you will, just for the process, I'm going to make a motion that we would go into public hearing if you allow. I know nobody's signed up.
Okay. So we will now open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, since no one has signed up and no one's come forth, we will ask for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second, a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. And the third item is petition of citizens for items on our agenda and we have no one who has signed up to speak on agenda items. Fourth item, Commissioners, is the consent agenda. We have the minutes from August 18. We have tax releases and refunds. We have under planning, a request to set a second public hearing, community development, block, neighborhood, grant revitalization, funding, project application. And lastly, we have the military service person of the quarter resolution. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Consent agenda, so moved and second?
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Okay. The next item is, Kelly, you're back. It's Kelly Cuthrill.
Thank you again. We're requesting approval to apply for the fiscal year 2627 Community Transportation Program and Combined Capital Grants. This is a grant that, or grants that we rely on to assist with the operating cost of public transit. We are requesting to apply for the entire allocation for the 5311 of $468,329 and the funding's broken down into 80% federal, 5% state, 15% local match. That represents 60% of our expenses. The other 40% are included in our 5307 urban grant. The combined capital application doesn't specify what grant it will be in. The state decides on that at a later time. We're seeking to apply for four replacement vehicles that have met or exceeded useful life. We're also seeking to apply for six replacement office chairs and one replacement shredder. The total cost is $487,710 and that's 80% federal, 10% state, and 10% local match. All the information has been available for review on the CARTs website and at the CARTs office. So we're asking for approval to make those applications.
Okay, Board, we're being asked to approve the requests to apply for the 2627 Community Transportation Program and Combined Capital Grants. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve this motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll please?
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Approved. Next item is Economic Development, item number six, Mr. Jeff Wood, and we're going to talk about Project Home 2.0.
Just a little bit more from the narrative. This is an exciting project for the county. BSH obviously is a major employer for us already. This is a situation where they made the decision to relocate jobs and investment from Tennessee in the Knoxville area to New Bern, showing our strength in economic development and workforce and operation costs. And then in addition to that, I would also like to state that the Craven County Alliance's Executive Committee last week appropriated $100,000 to go towards this local match to assist Craven County in our match of $250,000. So this has been a total effort between our economic development team. That's something that we'll come back with a budget amendment at a later date. So at this point in time, I'm asking for the approved budget amendment that was in your packet, as well as the resolution and any other documents that would accompany the grant agreement between the state and the company for Project Home 2.0.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Wood?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Jack, the money that's going to come from the reserve from the county, is that from the sale of property that we have put into Economic Development Fund or is it coming straight out of fund balance or?
It is from sales of land in the industrial park.
Okay, thank you.
And Jeff, just for the record, so it's actually because you got the additional $100,000 after the agenda went out, it's actually only $150,000 when you take the C1A's contribution. So actually reduce that a little bit.
So the good news is as we sell property and we put money into the bank, so to speak, so when we need a match like this, the money is there.
That's right.
Very good. Okay, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Have a roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Anything else you want to share with us tonight?
Not tonight, sir. Glad you guys have any more questions for me.
I don't think so.
All right.
Okay, we're good. Thank you. Item number eight, I'm sorry, number seven, Information Technology, Cloud Migration of AS400 Budget Amendment, Steve Bennett.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board.
Hey, Steve.
For the past 20 years, the Craven County has employed the use of an IBM AS400 mainframe system. This server has historically hosted legacy information from a variety of departments such as finance, human resources, planning, tax, sheriff, and DSS. The existing hardware has reached its end of life and it's time for an upgrade. We've determined that the best course of action is to move the server to the cloud and because this is a cloud contract, it falls under the GASP96 rules and so the Board will be requested to approve the attached budget amendment in the amount of $118,833 for the transition of the cloud migration of the AS400.
Questions for Mr. Bennett?
I just have a comment that when I read that we're still using the AS400, I was a little bit surprised. I didn't know that that programming was still being utilized.
So there's some types of data that we have here that can never die or go away and so we will be preserving it in perpetuity as we transition to a more modern system. But it, yeah, it's still very valid today.
So our more modern system won't be in the cloud, won't be in the cloud?
No, not with this. This is just a transition period.
Right.
Because the cost of maintaining an existing AS400 is a lot more than for this.
So this is basically just preserving our history?
Correct.
By using the cloud?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Will there be any data stored locally?
We still maintain records and backups and, yeah, we have a contract with them to guarantee the uptime and the resiliency of it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Move that we approve this plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Approved. Next item is Emergency Services, Department of Insurance, County Grant Match Budget Amendment, Mr. Stanley Kite. And by the way, I should have opened the meeting by welcoming all you gentlemen who work so hard to keep our citizens, our county, our businesses, and our homes safe. So we appreciate all that you guys do every day. So thank you. Stanley?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I'd first like to say congratulations to these departments that worked to get this grant money to go to some big savings to the taxpayers throughout Craven County. I would just announce to you tonight, the Advance Borough has received an announcement of a grant of $20,090. The Little Swift Creek has received a grant for $40,000, Cove City for $30,000, Dover for $30,000, Fort Bonnwell for $40,000, Township 9 for $25,000. In order to give them an opportunity to express their needs and desires to fulfill this grant, I would just like to introduce each one of them to you tonight and let them come up and state what they're purchasing with these grant items. And the first on the list I have is Chief Blake Felton with Little Swift Creek Fire Department, if you don't mind, sir.
Thank you. We're asking the county for $40,000 to match the $40,000 we're receiving from the state towards purchasing a new cabin chassis for our equipment truck. The cabin chassis is a Kenworth T380. The total price is $110,957.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And how long will it take you to get that truck once we approve it?
We should actually probably get it about next week.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
It's available?
Once the state approved the grant, we went ahead and ordered it then.
Okay, very good.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a side note on that, Mr. Chairman, the difference is they're doing chassis where they're going to remount an existing body so it's not like a complete manufacturer.
Got it.
Next I have Chief Lewis with Vanceboro. I will let Chief Lewis at this time present. Please.
Lieutenant Chairman, Commissioners, approved list that was approved for Vanceboro Fire Department is 10 bags for turnout gear, one portable power rescue tool with hydraulic ram, six portable radios, a bank charger for those radios, 10, excuse me, five turnout gear, boots, five turnout gear coats, 10 sets of gloves, 10 sets of helmets, five turnout gear pants, and 10 VHF pager radios.
Okay.
Ours totaled $40,180 and requested $20,090.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions for him? No?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, I would introduce Chief White with the Dover Fire Department to figure it out.
Good evening. Brad White, Dover Fire Department, Fire Chief. We're requesting $30,000 this year. My list is fairly long. I'll go through it as quick as I can.
Take your time.
Adapter's and couplings, master intake valves, piston intake valve, winch, winch bracket, extrication gloves by 10, fire hose four, fire hose 10, fire hose four, fire hose 20, fire hose four, three pagers, four sets of turnout gear, four sets of, 10 sets of gloves, 10 sets of extrication gloves. We're requesting $30,000 from the county. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Well, it's that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next I have Cove City Fire Department. I'm not sure if the President, Mr. Katon, or the Chief's going to do the presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Russ Katon. I'm President of Cove City. We're asking for requesting $30,000 this year. We were approved for four SCBA packs, additional four bottles, and six mobile radios, viper radios. So not quite as long a list, but it's just as much, so.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah.
No questions, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next I have Chief Milligan with Fort Bonnwell Fire Department.
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening, Greg Milligan, Fire Chief, Fort Bonn, Bonneville Fire Department. I'm not going to bore you with all the equipment, but I think you've got it in front of you. There's 16 items, primarily, most of it's PPE, personal protective equipment, turnout gear, boots, helmets and gloves, and air packs. And there's also some thermal imaging cameras and some hoes as well, if y'all had any questions on that. Our total allocation that we allocated to the state was $87,075.74 and $47,075 would be the fire departments we have. We also go a little bit above to cover for sales, tax, shipping, and delivery and there were also some tariff charges this year, so we wanted to make sure we would cover. And our request is for $40,000 to match on our behalf.
Okay, any questions for?
I have a question.
Okay.
What do you use thermal imaging cameras for?
We use those when we go interior. We can search for, we can search for animals, we can search for people, we can even search for our own firefighters if they were down. It's a infrared imaging system which allows us to actually see in the dark, see through the smoke, and the body attempts will be higher than what we're looking at, so we can actually help find either our own personnel or, you know, other people.
So these are different than the cameras that use thermal imaging to see fires under the ground?
Well, it's similar to what you're saying under the ground. Now, we can use ours and actually look at tanks, LP tanks, and we can check the level of those. We can look at vehicles, so it's giving off heat signals and that's what we're looking for.
I was thinking about the percussion fires that we had two years ago.
To a degree, yes, you can see into the ground and find heat and it is fun for hotspots in the case of a forest fire. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Absolutely. If y'all had any questions about the public safety train facility, I appreciate y'all's support on that. Jack, I helped with Sheriff Hughes and past Senator Jim Perry, very instrumental in helping us get the public safety train facility going. Bids should be opening at the college here within the coming weeks and I hope we're going to be moving some dirt out there in the industrial park. But again, we appreciate your support and on behalf of all the fire chiefs in the county, we thank y'all.
That's going to be a big improvement.
Yes, sir. We'll.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd also expand that thermal imaging is really helpful to fire departments so that they don't have to go back for rekindles. They can find hidden hotspots and insulated walls and things like that to help them make sure the situation is cooled down. Next, sir, I have Chief Smith with the Number Nine Township Fire and Rescue.
We're requesting $25,285 for our match and part of the grant. We put in for traffic vest, the hydraulic cutter, a new hydraulic cutter and spreader to complement our deployment. They're allowed to be able to use them underwater to help us with getting vehicles out of the river and canals. Turnout gear coat, two air packs and mask and extra bottle because we got lucky a couple years ago and got a federal grant for new air packs, but 23 air packs going out at one time is a hurt, you know, so we're starting to spread it out now and get a couple a year or every other year, something like that, so we're not being hurt so bad. In helmet, hoods, pants, it's basically turnout gear for a firefighter.
Okay, any questions for him? No questions, thank you.
Sir, that concludes the departments that I have here represented tonight. Last order of business is to remind you there's other questions for a budget amendment so that you can move forward with these grants and help them go ahead and change their actions.
Mr. Chairman, just to point out.
Clarity, just for, in case someone just has the agenda, there is an error in the agenda where it says Vanceboro is $20,090. It's actually $20,090 as the chief described. Yeah, as the chief described, we just missed a zero in there. That's in the narrative, I believe.
That makes me feel better.
Yeah, the budget movement.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion that we approve the budget amendment in the amount of $370,750.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stanley. And once again, gentlemen, I don't know if the public understands what it would cost us if we had to have a fire department like New Bern or Havelock full-time because of your dedication and what you guys are willing to do and we sincerely appreciate it. Thank you very much. Jack?
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad the fire chiefs and presidents are here. I didn't put this on the agenda because he wouldn't have showed up to the meeting had I put it on there, but Mr. Kite, who's been with us a long time and served the citizens well, is a 2025 recipient of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Presidential Initiative, Heroic Hands, celebrating true public servants who are in it for the right reasons, and that's Stanley Kite. And I have valued my last 15 years working with Stanley. He does a great job and he's definitely deserving of this award, so I'm glad that these folks could be here. They've all worked with Stanley for a lot of years too, so. I know he doesn't like to be in the light, but I'm going to put him in it tonight, Stanley. Thank you, free service.
So that means he started before a lot of people in this room were born.
Yeah, it's true.
You could have gone all night without saying that.
Congratulations. Thanks, Stanley. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, the next item, number nine, Sheriff, North Carolina Association of Chiefs of Police Grant Acceptance.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is year two of this project or grant. We received it last year. This is a performance and wellness grant that we were awarded. It does a number of things. One, it tracks the wellness of my deputies from physical fitness assessments, performance reviews, any disciplinary, and it tracks us so we can see if there's any red flags or things we need to adjust. Also, it helps us track our resources that we have, also helps with scheduling, so it's a number of things and it comes to us at no cost. It's a very good program and now we're in year two of it and we were, based on our performance and use of it, we were awarded a second year. So I'm asking that y'all approve the acceptance of this grant in the amount of $20,067.
Okay, we're being asked to approve budget amendment for the performance and wellness grant from the NCACP for $20,006.7. Are there any questions to the sheriff?
No, sir. I would make a motion that we approve that.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Sheriff, that's approved?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Is there anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
First week of school went fairly well, fairly uneventful, knock on wood. Our resource officers were in all the schools, as was my command staff and every member of the office. I'm very pleased with the way things are going, you know, some minor things, traffic, people getting used to the congestion again. We've got certain places where it's more difficult than others, but everything's going really well.
But Labor Day didn't pose any real, anything unusual?
None. People in a hurry to get to the beaches if it was going to disappear and then in a hurry to get home. Folks from Raleigh, Durham, those areas that, I don't know, I guess the speed limit here is different than it might be up there.
Or they read differently.
There you go, but we slowed them down.
Okay, any questions for the sheriff?
No, I will make a comment though, on the school, we are starting out pretty good. We had a small hiccup in Carrick County and something that Sheriff Hughes has been tied into months, years before others, was part of his show and tell project.
tied into months, years before others, was part of his show and tell project. And that is these candies and treats and gummies and things that look just like things kids want. And unfortunately, in Carteret County, at one of our schools, someone, Pat, was passing out candy. And that candy would probably look a lot like something Sheriff Hughes would have in a show and tell. So you've been out there educating people in this community already, which is a credit to you, but also maybe has prevented something like that from happening. But I'll tell you, most of these cookies and candies, if someone left them on the table in the teacher's lounge, you'd grab them because it looks just like an Oreo cookie or a lollipop or whatever.
More than likely, it did come out of a vape store, whether it was Carteret County or whatever. I can tell you, to date, we've closed down seven of them in Craven County.
Well done.
And we're not done. All of them, we have our eye on all of them. Many of them are already holding charges and are going through the court system. But I think they're figuring out that Craven is probably not the place they want to set up shop, and I encourage them to move.
Yeah. Not only are they targeting kids, they're being successful in some places.
And they're making a lot of money.
And to think of the thousands of them across the state. We're just one county, and they've popped up everywhere. It's crazy.
Well, they're not popping up anymore here.
It's good.
So they're closing down.
Thank you.
Keep putting it on. Thank you.
I didn't remember ten is appointments under pending. We got the Craven Aging Planning Board, Craven County Clean Sweep Committee, Highway Seventy Corridor Committee, Craven County Planning Board, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and Volunteer Agricultural District, Districts One and Six. So those are coming up. Board, if you'd be aware of those and those that are appropriate to your area. Under current, under Community Child Protection Team, Sean Claybo seeks reappointment. Someone wants to nominate Sean Claybo.
I would nominate that nomination that we reappoint.
Are there any other nominations for Child Protection Team? Hearing none, he will be, he or she, Sean?
He.
He. Could be either.
True.
He will be appointed by acclamation. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Kaylee Circey, seeks to fill the seat vacated by Carly Bain midterm. And this is a district attorney designation. Her application is attached.
Ms. Chairman, I make that nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for that position? Hearing none, she will be appointed by acclamation. Regional Aging Advisory Board, Allison Schneider, seeks reappointment.
I nominate Ms. Schneider.
Are there any other nominations for that position? Hearing none, she will be appointed by acclamation. There's nothing upcoming in the way of appointments that we have to review tonight, so that'll conclude the item number ten. And item number eleven becomes our county attorney's report. Mr. Grady?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, good evening. I have four items for your consideration tonight. All four involve county-owned surplus property acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The first parcel is an initial offer to purchase. The property is located at eight oh four West Street in the city of New Bern with a parcel ID number of eight oh oh seven three six seven. The offer amount is three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure together were two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-six cents, and we've got a tax value on this parcel of seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. This is owned jointly with the city of New Bern, and the city has given its initial approval to this offer. I would suggest the board consider doing likewise so we could get it out for advertisement for upset bids.
Okay, we're being asked to adopt the proposed resolution and authorize advertisement for upset bid on eight dash zero zero seven dash three six seven.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Number B.
Yes, sir. The second item is an initial offer to purchase real property located at eight oh nine Green Street, also within the city of New Bern. We've got a parcel ID number of eight oh oh seven oh fifty-eight. The offer amount is three thousand dollars. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure together were eight thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars and fifteen cents. The tax value of this property is six thousand dollars, as with the first parcel. We own this one jointly with the city of New Bern, which has already given its approval to the initial bid, and I would suggest this board consider doing likewise so we can get it out for upset bids.
Okay. We're being asked to adopt the proposed resolution and authorize advertisement for upset bid on eight dash zero zero seven dash zero five eight. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Third item, item C.
The third item, Mr. Chairman, is another initial offer for property located at eight nineteen Miller Street, also within the city of New Bern with a parcel ID number of eight oh oh seven oh twenty-six. We've got an offer amount of three thousand dollars. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure totaled three, I'm sorry, eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. The tax value of this property is six thousand dollars. The city has already given its approval to this initial bid, and I would suggest this board do likewise.
Okay. We're being asked to adopt the proposed resolution and authorize advertisement for upset bids on parcel eight dash zero zero seven zero two six. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item passes. So, item D.
The last item, Mr. Chairman, we've got a final approval after the expiration of the upset bid period for property located at eleven ten Mechanic Street, also within the city of New Bern with a parcel ID number of eight oh one four two two six. The final offer amount is six thousand dollars. I wanted to pause there because this is the second six thousand dollar offer we've had for this property. We approved a final bid some months ago of six thousand dollars, but the bidder did not close. So we've gone back through the process, and we've just so happened to get a new bid in the amount of six thousand, and hopefully this one will actually close.
Is this a different person?
Yes, ma'am, it is. We've got the past due taxes and the original cost of foreclosure together were two thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars and ten cents, and the tax value of the property is six thousand dollars. The city of New Bern has already granted its final approval, so I would suggest this board do likewise, and hopefully we can get it back on the tax rolls soon.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you. Next item is the petition of citizens. Mr. Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, we have two citizens signed up this evening. The first would be Mr. Ray Griffin.
God bless you. We love you. Ray Griffin, nineteen eighty-one, Streets Ferry Road, Bass port, North Carolina. Freedom of speech carries a great responsibility for everyone, not just the government, the self-imposed dictator or the political elite, but everyone and the loss of it is the first step of slavery. If we lose or give up our freedoms of speech, we'll be quiet and take whatever the government is willing to give us or tell us what to believe. Nevertheless, I say we, the people, need to stand against these organizations who take away our freedoms of speech. Most important, God will not allow us to lose our freedom. So I ask the chairman today, if he would, to send me a copy of those who initiated the decree not to say in the name of Jesus, where it was originated from, who started, who directed it to Craven County, what was the reason it was brought up before this board, the dates that it was issued, and who or what party signed the decree, and was it literally a threat or was it a document? I would like to have that so I could take it back to my people and see what we can do. And I want to know, was it just for Craven County? Reason why I say that, I have been to other meetings, and they were able to do as they wished to do. There was no restraints whatsoever. So I ask, if you would, get that information to me so we can get it to the proper authorities and let them look at it and see what's going on. If you remember, a few years ago, the board was not here, when they'd done the thing about taking the name of Jesus, not being able to pronounce it, and you may remember, we had that overturned. We had Walter B. Jones at that time to work on it, and it was overturned by the fourth district. So I ask you tonight, if you would, to look into that, tend to some information so we can get on the ball to work on it, and we appreciate all your help. We need to, as I say, get stand up, get fired up, prayed up, keep looking up, because our rights are slowly being taken away. God bless all of you, and I'm looking forward to a letter or some initiation or come in or get it or whatever I can do for all this information that has been sent to Craven County. And I don't know if it's been sent to other counties. So that's one thing I need to know also. Amen. God bless you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Chairman, our next citizen is Mr. Albert Lester.
Mr. Lester, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, commissioners, county manager, assistant county manager, and the audience. My name is Albert Lester. I live at seven oh six Badger Lane in Havelock. I just want to say to the commissioners, thank you. Thank you for the hard work. Thank you for the hard decisions that you have to make day in and day out. Thank you for the low taxes. Also, I want to thank all the young geniuses that was from Fort Gwinwell and volunteer fire people. They are great, and they save us a lot of money. And I want to thank the Sheriff Department for the great job that his Sheriff Department is doing, especially animal service. I see them out and about almost every day, taking care of their business. And I also want to thank, the first week of school went great. Fist bumps, handshakes, hugs, crying, all this was with the Sheriff Department. Other law enforcement agency was out and about with the Sheriff Department all over Craven County. And Craven County is growing, and we as a team can make Craven County even grow bigger. And I really thank each and every one of you for everything you do for us.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Appreciate it.
Ms. Chairman, next.
Okay, the next item would be number thirteen, county manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a report. I just would add a little bit on to, I know Mr. Kite's left now, but as I reflected a little bit yesterday about Labor Day and the public service, that we have so many awesome public servants in Craven County, as Mr. Lester just said, whether it's our volunteers from our fire departments, our EMS squads, or folks who run the clean sweep program, or all the employees in Craven County. And I'm very thankful for each and every one of them. They work very hard all year round. Some of them even worked yesterday when a lot of us took it off, but they're here for the citizens, and it's a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate what you do for us. Last item before our closed session would be the commissioners' reports. Who would like to go first? Anybody?
I have no idea.
You want to go first?
No report.
No report.
I never want to go first, but I shall. I have a few things that I would like to bring to your attention. I think some of them are good things that are happening here in Craven County. One is a little about staff. On last Sunday, I was asked to serve on a panel at a church. The sponsor was the African American Heritage Cultural Center, and about six of us were asked to share our journey from the segregated world of life and work into the integrated system. And I was one of the people that was asked to do that, and I gave a brief narrative of my life experiences. And it was from an administrator, two doctors, a librarian and a teacher, I think it was. So we had a diverse group, and I think that it went quite well. As usual, we had more Caucasians in the room than black people, but it was a nice program. The next thing is that I'd like to share, Delta Sigma Theta is a sorority here in New Bern. I'm not a member of that sorority, but my sister is. They are sponsoring a, trying to see what it's saying here, a candidates forum. It's real big right here. They are sponsoring a candidates forum. It's at Stanley White Recreation Center, six oh one Third Avenue, New Bern, North Carolina. And it's going to be September ninth at six PM to eight PM. Door prizes will be given. So we invite all of the citizens who are in the area to attend that, so that you can get to meet and hear from the candidates that are running for the Board of Alderman and for the New Bern Office. Now, the next announcement that I'd like to share, I thought that Jack was going to do this and save me. Are you going to do that? Or you prefer that I do it?
Help me.
It's the Garber.
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't think I have a copy, Commissioner Smith.
I got one right here.
Yep.
You don't want to do it?
Do you want a copy?
Yeah, I sure will. Absolutely. Thank you.
This is, I think it's very important.
So on Friday, October third, from five to nine PM, Garber Methodist Church and the Issler Vision Foundation present Faith in Action Vision Clinic, free eye exams and glasses for children and adults. It'll also be on Saturday, October fourth, from eight AM to five PM, located at the Garber Church Ministry Center, forty-two oh two Country Club Road, New Bern, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Howard?
No report exactly, but I will comment on, whenever you give me a chance, I will say that Stanley Kite, the Hero's Hands Award, I walked through all the, there were several from throughout the state that received an award. And I will say that Stanley stood out for multiple reasons, but one of those was years of service. I don't think anyone could hold a candle to him in the entire state with the number of years he has committed to Craven County. And I'm thinking on that, when he does retire, what a loss we'll have of institutional knowledge and readiness. But fortunately, he has somebody ready to, he's been training somebody, but I will note that. And second thing I'll notice, note, and I won't still Abigail Stunder on this, so I won't be very specific, but I was talking to clerks at the NACO conference, and they were, someone commented on her and how quickly she stepped up when she became a clerk and got something very special for Craven County. But I'll let her make that announcement, because I know that's not public yet, so.
Thank you. Did you, something you want to announce, or is that later?
Well, yeah, it can be now. Thank you, Commissioner Howard.
He kind of opened the thing up, right? I mean, what do you, you have to now.
Yeah, so back in November, I was asked if Craven County would be interested in hosting the annual clerk conference in twenty twenty-six, and so that'll be in March next year, so.
Well, the way she explained it is, they were looking for somebody, and you raised her hand and volunteered us and got, so we're going to have all these people from all over the state come into Craven County because you stepped up to the plate.
Yes, sir.
Good for local businesses.
Yes, it will draw anywhere from sixty-five to eighty clerks and vendors and others here to the county. And so I originally asked about hosting a regional conference, which is a one-day conference in the fall. And so they followed up with me and said, hey, we've been really interested in coming to Craven County for an annual conference, which is a three-day conference. And so I said, yeah, sure, why not?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for doing that. Well, thanks for doing that.
Absolutely.
That's good news, and that brings money and people, and that's what we're looking for.
Yes, sir. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
It'll be the 50th anniversary of the Clerks Association also, so it'll be a big celebration, and we'll be sending out invitations to the board.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Not time to report.
Not time to report.
I'm sorry.
Can I say one other thing?
No. Of course, go ahead.
I'll be quiet, then, most times I don't have anything.
Go ahead.
I would like to follow Mr. Howard. The Kite, I have had him on most of my town halls. It's not just the fires that he works with, but he talks to citizens and trains them and does the best workshops on how to prepare for disasters and hurricanes and that kind of thing. That is invaluable information for folk, our citizens, to know what they need to do prior to a disaster. It gives them a heads up, and I just, I've used him so much, I'm a little bit embarrassed, but I do appreciate, and he does a great job, and I do appreciate that, I want to say that.
Very good, yeah, thanks. We can't mention enough how fortunate we are to have Stanley on our team, and thank you both for mentioning that. You have nothing? I would only mention that a couple, several of us attended a conference in Greenville a couple of weeks ago, the North Carolina Associate Association of County Commissioners, and there were some good workshops and good message, so thank you for those who were able to do that. Are there any other comments that you folks would like to make? If not, we will conclude, and we are going to go into closed session, and the closed session is pursuant to NCGS 143-381A5, property acquisition. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.